By the way, everybody to the June 2 Madison County School Board meeting. There was a public input form back there. I got it up here now, sir. But if anybody else wants to sign it, you get three minutes to address the board in just a little while. And at this time, we will have this Katie Knight is going to introduce our young folks who's going to play for us.
Good evening, everyone. We're excited to welcome Eliana and Sophia Clark to the Madison County Central School next year. Eliana is entering the fifth grade and Sophia is entering the second grade. They are the daughters of Terry and Mildred Clark, who will be the new pastors at the Madison Church of God. Eliana has been on the honor roll all year long, and she has a passion for singing. Sophia has also been working hard in staying on the eighth honor roll, and she loves art and dance. We are thrilled to welcome both of these students to our MCCS team and welcome their family to our community. Ladies, please join us.
That's all, Stan.
Please bow your heads and close your eyes. Dear God, thank you for this day and for bringing us all together. Thank you for bringing me and my family back to Madison. Thank you for our schools, our teachers, and everyone who works hard to help Madison County students. Would we ask for your guidance and wisdom for this school board members tonight? Please help them make good, godly decisions. Help our schools to be places where kindness, respect, and teamwork shine every day. Help us to treat others the way we want to be treated and to always do what's right even when it's hard. Thank you for caring about each student, each teacher, and each family in our community. Please bless our schools. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. All right, that place.
(Inaudible)
Thanks for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to the agenda. We have some amendments to the agenda tonight. We are going to be adding 4.9 joint use agreement with FSU upward bound to the consent agenda. We're going to be pulling 4.5 from the consent agenda and adding it to the item for individual consideration at 5.10.
I'm sorry?
Pulling 4.5.
Pulling 4.5 from the consent.
4.5, okay.
Moving 4.5 from the consent to the individual.
Okay, you said pulling. That's where you were confusing me. I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah. We say pulling in Greenville.
(Laughter).
All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Knight, and a second by Ms. Hagan to adopt the agenda with the amendments. Is there any discussion on this? If not, all approved. Five zero. Now we're going to go to the consent agenda, and it's 4.1 minutes.
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. I'm sorry. I'm jumping. Oh, Lord. Public comment. Okay, Ms. Fulmer.
Good evening. I think all y'all know me. My name is Jennifer Fulmer. I drive bus 38 for Madison County. I've been here for 19 years. This year, we've had some communication issues, so I had some questions. We wanted to make sure that transportation was acknowledged as a job site, that we deserve information, just like every other job site, school, janitors, SROs, everybody else. A shared transportation director requirements. I'm very curious just to know what their duties and responsibilities are going to be. Are they going to be required to carry a CDL, perform statutory tests, and fill in bus routes, just like we previously have in the past years? Not just somebody taking a seat and a few extra dollars. When will this shared transportation director position be posted? Will it be posted in Madison and Jefferson County in-house the first three days? How is that going to work? Mechanics, with that being outsourced, who's going to be at the transportation office for us in the mornings to open or close the gates? Who's going to be available for us to call if our buses don't start or if we're broke down? I would also request that, under the sunshine law, that the interest-based bargaining meetings also be published publicly. Those meeting dates, every month, or sometimes they're not every month, but those are also supposed to be published and open to the public also. Transportation really greatly appreciates Mr. Walter and his team in finance and his openness to communicate and resolve the past field trip and extra pay issue, even though I'm understanding that some people were aware of it a week before April's payday. Those drivers still did not receive their pay until their May paychecks. So the work was done on time. They were not paid on time. That needs to be taken care of in a more timely manner in future instances. And lastly, I would like to inquire, as an Army brat myself, married to a Marine, and two sons that served, why there is not an American flag flying at our school district or at Madison County Central School? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
And those questions will be answered through to superintendent.
All right, next, Ms. Roxanne.
Good afternoon. Many of you not know me. I also drive a school bus. This year, it's bus 42 out in Greenville, but I also am a mechanics helper. So right now, it's me. And I don't understand the outsourcing because I've priced some of the stuff, and I know how much it costs, so I don't know how that's going to work. And I was kind of wondering how that would be. And also, there's been a lot of turnover in the transportation department as director. We seem to have a person, since Mr. Ivan, bless his heart, has been deceased and has left us. Every year, it's been somebody new, something different. We have a wonderful director right now, and we have a lot going on with the merging of the schools. We have lots of questions. And with him leaving, we're not sure, as bus drivers, what that entails for us. Another director, we don't know. Like she said, is it going to be opened in both sections at the same time? Is it going to be Jefferson County first? Their three days, they apply? You know, do we get the same option? Because if we have someone coming over, I don't think with the transition, they will have Madison's best interest and heart. And if we're paying 60%, and I know Jefferson makes a whole lot more money than what we make, does the math actually compute to we're actually saving money? You know, if we only save a couple thousand dollars, is that really worth only having somebody 60% of the time here? Buses are not people, and our people also get sick. We don't have the resources and the people as it is right now. We're a great family. We work together. I know Mr. Tyrone runs routes. Sometimes Jen has to pick up a second route. We're doing all we can trying to keep it together. We know it's going to get better, but if we don't have a director here full time, who do we count on? That 40% he's not here as a director? And if they're not from Madison, and they're doing another school, and they've been at another school, do they really have Madison's best interest and our students' best interest in heart? I became a bus driver because I think that is a great way for me to move here and be part of the community.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you.
Ma'am, those specific questions will be answered in due time.
Ms. Fulmer? Ma'am?
I would like for Michelle to go up for one minute, please.
Just add her to the list.
I got it.
Good evening, school members, community. I'm Michelle Rasmussen. I drive bus 32. I'm known as Ms. R. Just recently had a child graduate from Madison County High School, where I'm very proud to be a parent from, where I advocate for my community, for my school, and for all of us. I'm not from here. I'm from Hillsborough County originally, trained there, came to you as a trained school bus driver, as well as a CDLA holder. I just recently passed a million miles of safe miles driving. I take that with a lot of pride. Every one of my parents know me, and they know the first thing that I tell them. I'm strict. Your kids will tell you I'm mean, but I care. I'm going to get your kids to school, and I'm going to get your kids back, children, back home safely. And that is my motto, safety. A million miles, that's what I come to you for. I've been here since 2019. Ivan Johnson hired me with Cindy. They were as passionate as I am. If you know me, I'm extremely passionate, emotional, but passionate. I care. But that's not how I've always felt towards me as a bus driver in this community. Do you see us? Do you see me? Or am I just 32? Are we just 43? Are we just? When do we become more than just? I come with that experience from 2011. I make exactly the same amount of money as beginners. Million miles, coast to coast, been there. In that time, Ivan Johnson was amazing boss, amazing. COVID came within nine months of me being here. Six months later, he was diagnosed with cancer. We were without a boss. We did the best we could. We came together the best we could, floundering like fish out of a water. Then we got another supervisor, then I was out for medical, personal. We've been through three hurricanes, four tornadoes, ice snow storm, icy roads that Florida never sees. I saw them, but we've never seen them. Then we get Mr. Ansley, passionate, caring, community. I have parents who have used to call and complain all the time on the route that I'm now on. I was your Greenville driver. I advocated for my parents, my students. I knew they worked in Tallahassee. I know when they go to work. Michelle will be there. Ms. R will be there within three months of her time. We got Mr. Ansley, and he brought us together. No more floundering, no more fish out of water, together, family. I don't have family other than my children and my husband. That's personal. This is my family. They have my back every time. Told you I was out for a year. Ms. Knight knows I was sick. You all brought me back graciously. Thank you. Please reconsider not having Mr. Ansley here because he is the reason why we are strong. Those parents that are coming from those outlying schools need Mr. Ansley here for transportation safety and stability.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I make a statement, please? Okay. We've heard you, and we do know that you are our first point of contact with the students. We've discussed this as a board before. We appreciate you. We have listened, but we don't, because you're at public comments, we can't make a decision right then and there.
Thank you for having me.
So we appreciate all of you who have spoken. We know that you are our first point of contact with the students.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Fulmer?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm not good about coming up and talking, but I've been here for 12 years. I drive one of the Pinetta routes, and I think this combining services, I don't feel that is a good idea. Like Roxy was saying, that Madison be paying 60% and the other 40. I don't see how we are going to benefit from that. I drive the school bus. It's at the high school, in the central school, in the classrooms, and also in the cafeteria. And I know this is affecting a lot of people in a lot of different ways. And I hear y'all say how y'all appreciate what we do, but personally, I just don't see it. My kids went to school here. I tried to keep them from having to come here as long as I could, but my husband, he wanted to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I can't even read that. I can't even read that.
I'm sorry. Whoever signed in before Mr. Ansley, before Tyrone, I can't.
After Ms. Laura.
It's after Ms. Fulmer. Who signed in? I don't know. I can't make out the name.
Is that Mr. Hackel?
I didn't hear you speak.
Okay.
Okay, I got you. I got you.
It's okay. It's okay.
All right, Ms. Daphne?
Good afternoon. I just want to give the end of the year report for our transportation family. Thank you all for having me here. Thank you for being able to hear us. The drivers, they surprised me today. But when I first got here, one of the things that we was dealing with was overcrowding on a couple of routes. We was getting a lot of complaints, a lot of bullying complaints, and we was able to deal with those and get those situated. I remember probably like my second week here, Travis called, and he says, "Where are you at?" I said, "I'm home." He was like, "Well, we got a bus in Lake City at a football game, and it's the light on." So I remember coming over here, getting the stuff, going up there, looking at the bus, one of our brand-new buses, and was able to be able to get it back without any outsourcing or anything. At this point, we have now did 310 field trips, not including activities. We have did over 600,000 miles just for our Madison County transportation here. They know my expectations. We have had no accident reports this year. We have had only two breakdowns, and that was a belt, and I think the other one was a electrical issue. And we had an opportunity to honor our resource officers, which we do appreciate. Our future goals was to continue to restructure our routes for consolidation, also to look at the mileage of the buses, because we have several buses that are under warranty, and they're almost at 100,000 mile. So we wanted to switch those buses so we can keep the amount of warranty to last long. And as we always do, we like to continue to keep our staff, students, and general public safe. Thank you again. I appreciate you. Y'all have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Minor?
Good evening. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to serve Madison County School District for approximately half of my life. I spent an amazing 22 years at Pinetta Elementary School, one year at Madison County Central School, and the last two amazing years at Lee Elementary School. I have enjoyed serving under the finest of school principals, as well as superintendents and other administration. I pride myself with the work I've done and have received only highly effective evaluations along the way. Education, students, and people are my passion. With the consolidation and my current school closing, I had to reapply within the district for a new position. I did. Last week, Ms. Brown called and offered me a position for the 25-26 school year as an assistant principal at MCCS. I gladly accepted. I was very excited to be a part of the consolidation of the schools. However, since that time, it has been brought to my attention by your superintendent that I was not her choice, nor the committee's choice. After a conversation with her, I left feeling belittled, harassed, and threatened. My hope and prayer is that no other employee will endure or witness the cruelty as I did behind that closed door. What I endured last Thursday in a meeting has left me with no other option but to now decline the offer of AP at MCCS. I am not giving up on nor abandoning my fellow coworkers, students, or this one-of-a-kind extraordinary community that I love. I will continue to serve my current contract until June 30th and work hard during that time to help ensure a successful transition for this consolidation. Our students and staff deserve all the support possible, especially now. It has never been my intention to leave Madison, ever. However, I would never allow my students nor my staff to be harassed or bullied, and I cannot allow it for myself. I ask this board to take a good, hard look at the longtime loyal employees, 20-plus years, extremely valuable employees, that have left this district under your superintendent's current and past appointment. I would be happy to provide names. And for what it's worth, Madison County, when we have a superintendent that will put the needs of students above her own agenda and power, I would love the opportunity to come back and serve the students, staff, and community that I love. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Mr. Cornigay.
Good afternoon, school board. How are you doing? Right. Thank you all for this opportunity. I almost did not come to this meeting because I've been traveling, but I'm glad that I did because I didn't know that so much was going to be shared tonight. I came with some concerns from the town of Greenville. As you know, I serve as mayor of the town of Greenville. And I still, to this day, get constant questions from parents of, "What are we going to do about consolidation?" I'm like, "I don't know." Exactly. But I can bring you some of the questions that I get from individuals. There are parents who are concerned that their students will become a number and get lost in the system. There are parents who are concerned that their students won't receive the needs that they, will have their needs met that they need coming from Greenville. So some of the questions I have for you all are, what are some of the different avenues and mechanisms that you plan to use to make sure that students from not just Greenville, but Lee and Pinetta will also make sure that they have as much care in coming into this consolidation, but also making sure that they don't become lost within the system? And don't get me wrong. I know that I went to Madison County Central School. I know that we care about all students. However, coming from a community school that's smaller in size to a bigger campus like that, I know how easy it is to become just a number. So I would love to understand and work with you all to figure out how we can better make sure that those students, their needs are met, and ensuring that we get the students the quality of care that they need. Also, as working with our town council, I'd love to know how can we collaborate with you all to make sure that our students have a seamless transition? Because I do believe that it doesn't just start or end in the classroom, but we need to make sure that it's going on in the community as well. We're working through a number of grant programs currently with some of our nonprofit partners to make sure that we have some youth development-specific opportunities, but we want to work with you all directly to make sure that our students have all of their needs addressed. Literacy issues are a problem across the board, not just in Greenville, but everywhere, and we want to be able to make sure we can work with you all. So I'd love to be able to continue to collaborate with you all on that, but there are some dire needs that need to be addressed. Knowing that one of the concerns, and I've heard Ms. Bea just talk about it, you all have been discussing issues about busing. As you know, that was one of the main concerns about this consolidation thing. And hearing some of the concerns tonight is definitely very scary to kind of hear, and I know a lot of parents might not even know what's going on right now. So I would definitely love that you all continue to work as hard as possible to kind of address that because that is a major issue. And so as somebody who lived in one of the outlying areas, going to the central school, I can only imagine younger kids in that generation having to now do that at first kindergarten, first, second, third grade. So just wanted to share that. Would love to know how we can continue to collaborate and work with you all, but also, parents still want to know how to become at ease. And I do want to share this. I know communication is not the easiest thing across the board, but there are a lot of parents who feel like they don't know what's going on. There are a lot of parents who feel like the communication is pretty much off. And I can, for example, I'll just give you this. I know there's a lot of concern about parent participation at the CAT meetings in Greenville. As somebody who knows what those CAT meetings are, I would see signs in the community that said CAT meeting. Nobody had a clue what that meant. CAT meeting at 5:00 PM. And if you're somebody who has no clue what that means, you don't know to come to it. You don't know what that's about. You don't know what to learn about it. So I think my time is up, but I just want to say, please, we can work on communication, getting our parents and communities to know a little bit more. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, now we can go to the consent agenda. 4.1 is minutes. 4.2 is Taylor County inter-district agreements. 4.3 is the UFL.
UFL.
It's called UFL.
UFL, foundations, sponsorship, implication, project agreement. 4.4, Florida Learning Alliance. We moved.
4.5.
4.5. 4.6, psychological services for schools and families. And 4.7, management consultants. 4.8, armor, physical therapy. And 4.9, the joint use agreement with FSU upward bound.
I move to approve the consent agenda items.
I second.
I have a motion by Ms. Gibson, and a second by Ms. Knight to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor. Five zero, Ms. Timmy. All right. Items for individual consideration.
Fleet.
Fleet. Fleet, Florida Educator Health Trust.
Presentation by Mr. Ted Roush.
Mr. Roush.
Good evening, superintendent and board members. It's great to be here with you all tonight. I'm going to give you all a handout before we get started.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
While he's passing that out, do you guys pull your mics closer? We know y'all have bus driver voices, but it's hard to hear you all.
Well, you guys won't be able to hear us with them. It's more for online. So we can try to talk louder.
Okay.
Because they don't.
Do for that bus driver voice.
Yes, ma'am.
I got a teacher voice.
I got a loud voice.
I'll try to put on my principal superintendent's voice. How about that?
My outfield's voice, not my indoor voice.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight to talk about Fleet, which is the Florida Educator Health Trust. I think you all can identify with where I'm coming from as a former teacher, as a former principal, as a former superintendent, having left Swanee after two terms this last November of 2024, that each year, as we faced health insurance renewals for our employees, especially our employees that make less on the lower end of the pay scale, it always made me cringe as a superintendent about how our folks are going to be able to afford health insurance coverage. And year over year, it's just that heavy lift. And so when I had the opportunity here about a month and a half ago, after having a conversation with Senator Bill Monford, who is the CEO of FATHS, the Florida Association of District School Superintendents, and he said, "Hey, we have this trust called Fleet, and we'd like you to head it up." This was one of my passions as a superintendent, to try to make things better for our employees. So I'd like to kind of think about it through that lens tonight as we talk about what Fleet offers. So if you'll turn the cover page, first question is, what is Fleet? Fleet is formerly known as the F ship program, and that was formed by FISBIT under the umbrella of the Florida School Boards Association in 2009. school board that wanted to participate in F-ship was a member of FISBIT. And so therefore, their district, their superintendent, their board member nominee did not have any representation on the F-ship operation or the F-ship trust under FSBA. So the minds got together before I got there and said, "You know what? You know who all 67 are members of? The Florida Association of District School Superintendents, FADS." And so F-ship became Fleet under the FADS umbrella to be able to bring access to all 67 school districts. So the sole purpose of Fleet is to provide health insurance trust for school districts that brings buying power, transparency. Well, that's a big word when you start talking about insurance, the health insurance industry, efficiency, long-term savings to participating districts while putting school districts, not brokers, in charge of their programs. Let me flip the next page. Continuation of what is Fleet? Fleet is a nonprofit. Fleet is a nonprofit, and we see ourselves, as we've built this program out from the original days of the F-ship program, to be a sustainable savings solution for school districts across the health insurance spectrum, and to quite honestly bring transparency and control back to the process and back to the individual district. So why Fleet? I've said it before, transparency, control, accountability, engagement, all of those things that supercharge district savings, along with economies of scale buying power. So one of those things that, as we've dealt with, obviously, our small North Florida rural districts, and I've worked in Taylor County, Columbia County, Swanee County over my 30-plus year career, is that we're always trying to go at it alone. We're always trying to go by ourselves, right? We're shopping just for our insurance, just for our district. And so we don't have the same buying power as a Polk or a Hillsborough, a Miami Dade, a Duval. And so that's one of those things through economy of scale buying power inside the trust that I think and I believe is a great solution for our small, medium districts. Of course, all districts are welcome into the trust, but it's our small, mediums that struggle with that buying power. Fleet will provide financial stability through minimizing year-to-year volatility. You know those years where you have a 5% renewal, and some years you have a 20% renewal? Well, when you're fully insured, you're kind of at the behest and you're holding to what the broker is able to negotiate through your carrier, right? In a self-insured platform where you're building your own account, you're building your own reserves, you can make decisions as a board through your insurance and benefits folks, through your finance department, as to how you want to try to attack that problem. Under fully, I'm going to take just a minute, I've got just a couple minutes worth of time, and I have 15 minutes, and I'm going to try to go fast. When you're fully insured, you have to go to the dealership, and I'll use the analogy of going to buy a truck. Okay, so I'm a Ford guy, I buy Fords. When I go to the dealership, they got an XL, an XLT, and a Lariat, and I can pick right off the, that's it. Or I can order mine and build it like I want it, right, and have it delivered and wait probably a year to get it. In a self-insured environment, you have planned control of your planned control and design and what you choose to offer among your plans, as well as the deductibles that are associated with those plans, and how that gets tiered out through actuarial assistance on the backend that is part of this program. So just something to consider, some of the differences between the health insurance programs being fully insured and self-insured. Fleet also offers health plan rehabilitation for those programs that are struggling. Our program in Swanee was struggling. Our rates were going up year over year over year, to the point that I thought, you know, we saw declining enrollment. Maybe that's true here, maybe it's not. But every year over year, when I'd ask the question, "How many people do we have participating or taking our health insurance this year?", the numbers continually went down because people increasingly could not afford it. So we engaged in some of this work, before Fleet was a thing, we engaged in some of this work, and so I know the value that Fleet brings to the table by working on claims reduction, sharing best practices, and those types of things. 11208 compliance is the Florida statute that regulates and controls self-insured programs in the insurance market for public entities and school districts. So Fleet also handles the compliance aspect and building that compliance report for OIR, which is the Office of Insurance Regulation in Tallahassee, when you have a self-insured plan. Share and dividend program through risk sharing with individual district protection. After a district has been in Fleet for two years, there's an opportunity to risk share, and I won't get into all the details and the nuances of what that looks like on the stop-loss end, because there's different stratified layers of stop-loss that exist on the risk-sharing side that we can talk about down the road should you all choose to become a part of Fleet. And then stop-loss premium reduction stabilization. We have inside Fleet a broker that shops not on the percentage, they don't get paid on the percentage of the stop-loss premium, and this is the difference in what you'll normally see. They get paid a flat PEPM. So if you have 300 employees, they're getting a flat PEPM per employee, per member, per month. So they have no stake. I've always scratched my head about that and said, you know, what interested my broker in Swanee have to bring, what motivation does they have to bring me a lower quote on my stop-loss insurance in my self-insured program if they're getting paid a percentage over the overall premium, right? The premium goes up, their compensation goes up. So this is all built on a PEPM basis, including the stop-loss piece. And then reduce district procurement and operational costs. And so the trust also goes out for procurement on all these different things, on your carrier for you, on your pharmacy benefit, your PBM, your stop-loss, if you end up in the self-insured world. And so that's just an overview of why Fleet and some of the things that Fleet is able to do for its member districts. Turning the page, who is eligible to join Fleet? I've already said, all 67 districts are eligible to join Fleet because of it now being under FADS, where FISBIT was a closed, members-only network. School districts that are already self-insured or willing to become self-insured are all eligible to join. And then district leadership and school boards that are motivated to engage in long-term solutions for their health insurance programs. And I will say that that's one of the things that, you know, as you think about and contemplate whether or not Fleet would be a fit for your district, is that a self-insurance program is not a, "We'll try it for a year." Okay? A self-insurance program is a five-to-seven-year commitment. And there's a lot of reasons for that, the time won't allow for me to go into tonight, but there's a lot of guardrails and safeguards that go along the way, hand-holding to make sure that Madison County School District's investment in their overall health insurance program is protected, and your risk is also protected. So flipping the page, how would you participate in Fleet if this board were to choose to do so? The school board must adopt a participation agreement. Very simple, it's a one-page document that simply says, think of it as your letter of intent. I'm a football player, I'm going to leave Madison County High School, and I'm signing my letter of intent to go play at FSU. That's what this participation agreement is. It does not bind you if you choose to back out. It simply puts the ball in motion to be able to start having the conversations about transitioning the district from a fully insured plan to a self-insured plan inside of the Fleet Health Insurance Trust. After the participation agreement is adopted, the district goes on the journey to becoming self-insured. There's a transition plan established with our program manager, who's a VALE Analytics. The district formally enters the Fleet program, and then each superintendent of Fleet, as a superintendent in the district, is a member or a trustee on the Fleet trust. We felt very strongly that superintendents needed to be on the trust that represent their own individual districts as being drivers as a part of the overall operation of the program. So what can the district expect? That's the next page. Number one, and I can't overemphasize this enough, education on the value of actively managing a self-insured program. It is different than being fully insured, because right now, you pay a premium. You pay a premium premium for having the health insurance company carry 100% of all the risk. During your good years, when your MLRs, your medical loss ratios are running well under 85 or under 80%, they also get to keep all that profit. So in a self-insured world, you get to save all of that money during the good years, and during your bad years, you have money banked to help offset, and you control how much you increase or decrease your funding through board contribution and your employee per payroll deduction rates based on how you want to attack that bad year. Currently, you don't have that option. You just have to work through that annual renewal with whatever the broker is able to negotiate with the carrier. So inside of the program, by moving potentially from a fully insured program to a self-insured program, Madison County School District could expect to save in year one 7% to 12%, even after the cost of being in Fleet. Because there's obviously a cost of being in Fleet, even though we're nonprofit, we've got some 25, 25 employees in four different entities that are working hand-in-hand, day in, day out, to ensure the success of the program and the actual day-to-day operation and running of the program for the school districts. So even after that is satisfied, you would see a 7% to 12% savings right out the gate year one. Over time, with districts that have already been formerly in F-ship, now in Fleet as a transition, 7% to 13% on average over a five-year period in savings, over the savings they would have had if they would have stayed independently self-insured, simply because of the buying power aspect that we spoke about earlier. Industry-leading assistance with data analysis and application. So right now, because you're fully insured, you only have limited access to data. Basically, you see your medical loss ratio, and you don't see very much more. Within the trust, there's a data warehouse that allows you to be able to not know by name, because obviously, that's HIPAA, there's all kinds of HIPAA rules and regulations around those things. But it allows the district to know, through the data warehouse, if we've got 200 employees that need to be on blood pressure medication or cholesterol because of their biometric screenings they had done, but we're not seeing any prescriptions generated on the backend, what does that tell you? That tells you that we need to engage employee wellness and try to encourage them, right, to be able to address those issues, because we know if we treat those issues on the front end, less likely to have a heart attack, less likely to have a stroke on the backend, which manifests in those larger claims. Right now, you don't have access to that data. You just see the big claims as they come in. Your broker probably will give you a top 20 or a top 10 claims list for the year. And so inside the trust, a month-to-month dashboard that manages and gives that information to whoever your district contact is to say, "You know what? You might want to run through your next newsletter. You know, we're going to through some wellness dollars that we can generate through our carrier. We want to incentivize our employees by offering a drawing for something big, you know? We want to give some nice prize away, and everybody that goes and does their, you know, does their biometric screening or goes and gets their medication filled, or whatever it might be, goes into the drawing, and that's done on, you know, it'd be an employee number, not a name, and then when the one person is drawn to that name, they're giving consent on the front end, obviously, to be a part of the drawing, and be identified as the winner by their employee number if they're chosen. Does that make sense? So that's just part of the wellness support and program outcomes that are part of what goes into operating a successful self-insurance program with Inside Fleet. And the last thing, the last bullet says, "Performance audit of contract effectuation delivered by the agent or broker to ensure your return on investment as a district." So Inside Fleet, VALE Analytics audits whoever your broker is on a month-to-month, based on the scope of services that this board has identified that they're employing that broker for, and if the broker doesn't make good on the services that are supposed to be providing to you in a timely fashion, then they operate kind of as the referee and the sheriff to say, "Hey, you know what? There's a cost to that." And one of our districts just got like $50,000 back from their broker because they failed to meet the expectations and the limits within their contract. So that sheriff and referee is built in as a part of the Fleet program that is also available to any district that joins. Trying to move forward quickly, five unique facts, Fleet facts. Number one, a properly managed self-insurance program inside of Fleet will always, and that is a hard word to say, and I have argued with the folks that I've worked with on the day-to-day, can we really say always? Yeah, we can say always. Always will net savings over time when compared to a fully insured program over that same period of time. Number two does not apply to you all because you're not currently self-insured, but number three does, the Fleet program capitalizes on specialization of skills, ratificating conflicts of interest, and sharing your best practices, and that we operate in a controlled environment with guardrails where layers of costs are not driven on percentages of premium and profit margins, but rather on a flat PEPM per employee, per member, per month. And then most importantly, and the reason that I'm excited in my retirement from the state as a superintendent and five and a half months at the Florida Department of Education as the chancellor over K-12, which I won't go into that experience, but I survived it and I retired from it. This number five really excites me, and that is Fleet's direct obligation and fiduciary duty is to the district, is to the district and to its member districts, and not to a Fleet partners and operational components. One of the questions you all have is, well, who does what inside the trust? Well, FADS provides the administrative services to Fleet. So FADS has hired me as the executive director of Fleet to oversee contracts with vendors and the overall support of the program, and to have conversations with boards across the state like I'm having tonight. I will be in Brevard tomorrow at 2:00. I was in Polk County last Friday, having the same conversation with their good folks. So the four partners, FADS, obviously, the executive director, they provide the administrative oversight. VALE Analytics provides program management through checks and balances, best practice, development and completion and compliance with the Florida Statute 11208, audit for general compliance, and contract management for vendors that operate inside Fleet. Alliant is the company, it's an international company that operates with us on a PEPM, provides actuarial services. They help inform and suggest to you all on an annual basis, "Hey, here's how you all performed, here's what we would recommend you all funding, and here's what we recommend you all putting in for your employee costs on your schedule of benefits." They place the stop-loss insurance, and they also house the data warehouse. One important thing is, while they house the data warehouse, Madison County owns its own data within that warehouse. They manage the warehouse in the dashboard that your folks here at the district level would see on the monthly. But that's different than a lot of contracts that you would enter into with any vendor in that, as long as you're with them, the data's yours. When you're not with them any longer, the data's not yours anymore, right? Within this, if you stayed in Fleet five years and you went out, you would own all the data and take it with you to use and to use whatever value it had as you transitioned out of Fleet, which I can't imagine why somebody would. And then FISBIT, the Florida School Boards Insurance Trust, they serve as the accounting arm. They are the nuts and bolts. It's been in place since 2009. FISBIT has a long, rich history of managing a trust and the finances that go on within the trust and managing the bills from month to month. I'm not going to go through all of the things on the next page that say, "Member district program benefits." I'm going to highlight two things, many of these things I've already talked about, but there's two things here that I want to point out about middle of the page, which says, "Annual analysis and marketing of medical, pharmacy, and stop-loss programs." You all know how hard that is, is a small district. I mean, us over in Swanee, obviously, we're a lot larger, but we're still small by all comparison to larger districts. There's no way that we had the manpower, even with the broker we were working with, to try to annually analyze and market our medical, pharmacy, and stop-loss programs. And then the next one, "Annual repricing of your medical and pharmacy claims." So every year, pharmacy gets repriced. I'll give you an example. One district wanted to stay with Florida Blue Prime for their pharmacy benefits. Fleet has its own contract for Fleet as a group. Well, the district's rate through Florida Blue Prime came in higher than what they could get. The trust pharmacy benefits program was cheaper. The district wanted to keep it. So we engaged with Florida Blue and said, "Listen, this district wants to keep Florida Blue. Will you match the price? You need to match the price." And they matched the price of what was happening within the trust PBM, pharmacy benefits manager program. So all that is available to you all to still drive the ship in terms of how you want things to operate or who you want to do business with, but the controls and the leveraging of the consortium of the trust is valuable in helping keeping those fees and those costs down. And lastly, I'll just flip the page and say, "Any questions?" I am not an insurance salesman, I am not an insurance broker, I am a school person.
And you're getting better and better with each one of these meetings, aren't you?
I am trying. I am trying. I am trying. But you know, as a school board and as a superintendent, it's the second-largest financial obligation that we deal with outside of our payroll, isn't it? It's important. It's important. So it's just one of those things, every superintendent's kind of got their own little pet projects. School safety and this part of the French benefits program were my two, my candy issues, if you will, that I always loved working with and tinkering in. So about 25 years in two different districts, I've played heavily in the... pet projects, school safety, and this part of the, of the French benefits program were my two, my candy issues, if you will, that I always loved working with and tinkering in. So, about 25 years in two different districts, I've played heavily in the insurance sandbox from the, from the superintendent and principal side of the desk. Thank you all for your time tonight, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
No, it was a presentation, we'll consider it and talk about it, and consider it at our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Five point two, service agreement with the MCSB, SRO, and Guardians, ESE. Chris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'm really here just to answer any questions concerned you guys may have. You have the contract, yes? So, as you can see in the contract, our plans, or we submitted, was keeping all six SROs, four in the central school, two at the high school. Me, given the size of the central school and the volume we already have there handled by the SRDs, we'll have two on the elementary side and two on the middle school side. That's the plans for the consolidation on our end.
What will they be doing?
Same thing that they do now in the other schools. Providing security, they do DARE, they interact with the children, like all the other schools, they know every one of them kids, they know their parents. With the extra help of the school, now, when buses are dropping kids off, parents are dropping kids off, we have SRDs on campus. Currently, because we have the rest of the county to deal with as well, some of them are in school zones and all that. Now, we're down to two school zones, so that leaves our SRDs on campus, and taking the kids in when they show up with their parents, if they got questions or concerns, and our deputies can handle the road.
Well, our number one priority is safety, for sure. I mean, I think, in my mind, and I'm not going to be against it, but I've actually looked at you, and I don't know if you're a member of, let me see, what is it, NESCO?
Of what?
And that's the National Association of School Resource Officers.
I am one.
Okay, well, anyway, it doesn't, I just did a little research, and of course, they recommend one resource officer for 1,000 students. Now, I'm, like I said, I'm not against it, I'm all for safety, but, of course, I, I'm going to let you know all the children's names and all that, but it's, it's, it is excessive, but then again, that is our number one priority. And I'd like to shout out for Greg Ray, who did one resource officer at the high school, top-notch job.
I bet if you asked him if he wanted more, he would take more.
Well, now, that's not.
We didn't have the opportunity.
Is the sky the limit? I mean, in other words, are you allowed, is it?
I don't think.
Maybe that's a question for the superintendent.
I don't think you take a chance to be behind the curve on why they're there.
Well, no, we, we're not questioning why they're there, we're not disrespecting them. If anything, I have all the respect in the world for law enforcement, but I'm wondering, how many are we, is there such a thing as being allowed so many? I know it's coming from the safe schools.
So, we have a certain amount of funding that comes in under safe schools. Roughly 25 percent of that money goes to our two charter schools, so we keep 75 percent that is earmarked for school safety. So, we choose to use it for our SROs. We apply other monies towards, you know, we get other monies from the safe schools to apply for upgrading equipment, things like that. It still leaves, I think, there was about 5,000 left in that account, so it's, it's about 331.5. Right now, not having a budget, that was my concern when I did meet with the sheriff and the undersheriff, was our concern not knowing exactly what our funding would be until there is a budget. So, I, I do not have a prior, a concern with actually using that amount and having the safety on the school, because it, to me, it sends the message that we are making sure we're protecting our children and our staff, especially in light of the events at FSU and some of the events of our parents actually on campus.
Well, I understand that, and I'm not, you know, saying we shouldn't have them either.
No.
It's just, it is a lot of money, you know, but then again, if we're allotted so much to do whatever we feel like doing, that was, okay, you know. I, now, you said, mentioned DARE, is that just for one grade level, or is that going to be for?
Well, it'll be for more grade levels this time, because we have more resources at the schools.
Right.
Before, we were so spread out, that they couldn't, you know, two deputies couldn't take care of multiple grade levels, you did one grade level.
Okay, so it's, I was under the impression it was like for fifth graders or something, so it's for any?
In, in the past, it was, now, we can go higher and lower.
Okay.
I'll interrupt, but DARE runs the K-12 now.
Oh, okay.
Probably had four, who's a short, with, when I say short, deputies were in the outer schools, we had all these different fifth grade classes that remained at least fifth grade.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, was for the seventh grade.
And back when. Certain schools, it's only had to cover that school, one of the schools, this school with this grade.
So, now that we're going to have four at the, now that we're going to have four at the central school, they'll be able to do more in-depth with the children, with training and all that good stuff?
Yes, ma'am, and, and more grades, so it won't be just one part of the grade level. So, and as far as the budget goes, too, we spoke to the sheriff, he was unable to make it tonight. The, the money that we receive from the district, from the safe schools, doesn't pay for all those SROs. It pays less than 60 percent of what it costs to have them. He, he doesn't care, he's going to provide those SROs, because we already do extra, we send them to everywhere our children go in these schools, we have a deputy with them. They don't, we don't get reimbursed for that, we don't ask for money for it, he feels like if they leave here as a school event, or sporting event, or whatever, we're taking, we're sending people to try to protect them. So, as far as, you know, the budgetary side of it goes, it doesn't cover the whole program anyway.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And, and like I said, I'm all for it, but my job is to keep an eye on the money, you know, we're going to make sure that we're doing the wise thing, okay?
That's why I didn't bring Eth up here, because he would, she would've been a bad argument with the money thing.
Well, I got money out of the line, yes. Like, if you don't have it, don't spend it, you know, just like you and I do, you know.
I know, I understand.
You know that is.
I understand. But money hasn't changed in, oh, he told me, it's been 10 or 12 years, the money has not changed.
Right.
And that we still provide the same people, and our deputies actually get raises as we get raises, that doesn't affect what we get paid from the district. That goes in our book.
Well, we look forward to seeing you at the school this time, that's good.
Will be there.
Thank you.
Thanks for that cooperation.
I, thank you, I don't, I don't think we can put a price tag on the life of a child, and I think we need to ensure that we have everybody that we can, all hands on deck, and be proactive, so I appreciate you guys.
Mr. Chair, I would move to enter into the contract with the Madison County Sheriff's Office for the SRO agreement.
I second.
Okay, have a motion by Ms. Knight, and a second by Ms. Thompson, to enter into the agreement with the Madison County Sheriff's Department on the SRO and Guardians. Is there, you got a motion, a second, any discussion?
I don't believe it.
All right, any more? All in favor? Five zero.
There was a second.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I second.
There were two agreements on the.
Oh, are there?
Yeah.
For the, yes, 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 yes. For the ESE, yes.
The ESE, sure.
Mr. Chair, I would move to.
ESE.
Enter into the agreement for the ESE agreement with Madison County Sheriff's Office as well.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Ms. Knight, and a second by Ms. Hagan, to enter into an agreement with the Madison County Sheriff's Agreement on the ESE agreement. Any discussion on that? Not, all in favor? Five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, five point three, emergency advantage invoices, Mr. Tim.
Mr. Guinness not here, so I will go over these. There's five separate invoices, one for each of our sites, our schools, and then the district office. These are invoices from emergency advantage, or what we refer to here in the office as EA, and they are the deductible amount, so if you look at them, you'll see they're rather large amounts, but these are the deductible amounts that we owe to emergency advantage, and I ask for approval so that we can pay these.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the emergency advantage invoices.
I second.
Have a motion by Ms. Hagan, and a second by Ms. Knight, to pay the emergency advantage invoices. Any discussion on this?
I just had a question, has all of the funding from the insurance company come in on the flip side of these?
So, these were originally paid, this is the deductible amount.
Right, but all of the rest of the money came in from, from FISBIT?
We are still waiting on insurance monies.
It's, the rest of it is not coming in?
No, so, they actually paid them directly, this is back from Idalia, this is the deductible amount.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
More to this? If not, all in favor? Five zero.
Five point four.
Five point four, IT services, Dr. Pickles.
With our staffing plan changes, you'll remember and recall that we made changes to our IT services. When I was making those changes, I did reach out to our consortium, PACE, to, and also didn't affect, to see if they offered IT services. So, they actually recommended Eagle Tree Technologies, because Mr. Isaac will not be with us. So, they've recommended them, they are with four other districts and a couple other sites. I did speak to them, they highly recommend them. We are actually using the model that Taylor County uses, where we have a technician onsite in our school, and then they will provide our tier-two, tier-three, and our networking. And so, they have, this is the contract here for your approval. The only change is the date change in the contract on page, I guess, page three.
Yeah, where the.
Page three, number six, under the term, it should be, shall expire on June 30th of '26, not '25. So, they do come highly recommended by all our surrounding districts, so I do ask for your approval.
All right. All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to enter into the contract for IT services. With the, with the date change on page three.
Okay, have a motion by Ms. Knight, and a second by Ms. Hagan, to enter into a contract with the, with the IT services with, what's that, Eagle Tree?
Eagle Tree Technologies.
Eagle Tree Technologies. Okay, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. The, what's the beginning date, is it July 1?
July 1, yes.
Okay, the way I read it, it's $7,000 a month, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, what is the purpose in us doing this? Are we going to save money, or, I mean, I personally like to have a person like Mr. Goyette on board, day-to-day. There's not going to be a person here, you said it's going to be all.
I will, I will still, we will have two technicians still.
Well, no, I know, but they can't do, out of their mouth, what he does. They do what he tells them to do, but they can't, in other words, he's got all the knowledge that's required, and that, that bothers me. Now, then again, this is supposed to be a level one, this 7,000. Okay, and I can, and I think, I'm not sure if you did this, mention this, Dr. Pickles, about Taylor County boosting up to another level, which means more money. So, I, I'm wondering, I mean, we can, I know it's a contract for a year, but it just, it scares me knowing, you know, okay, we're 7,000 now, in six months, do we need to be level two, or how much would it be? You know, in other words, I don't know.
So, they will work with our, our techs, if there's something they cannot do, they will train them, they will check their abilities, kind of do a knowledge, skills, and abilities, and see what their true level is, and their present levels, train them, and work with them to make sure they are capable of handling the day-to-day operations onsite, and then they will start to handle any of the tier-two, tier-three tickets that need to come in.
They'll say, what about two, tier two?
Tier-two, tier-three, so the higher needs tickets.
Right.
That they are not capable of handling. So, if there's something, for instance.
How much is going to be tier-two and two?
That's included in this.
That's included?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, it's.
So, these two people will have some eye training?
Yes, yes.
Well, they're good, they, I mean, they, it's not like they don't know what they're doing, they do their job.
They're just going to, they're going to talk to them and assess their present skills and, and train them if there's something they do not know currently.
I understand the procedure.
Now, are they able to come over here if we need them and?
Yes.
Assist, because everything is connected with technology nowadays.
It is, yes, ma'am.
It's a big thing right here.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know, even that high school graduation, I was told it was either 68 or 7,800 dollars if, if he didn't do it. So, see, that's going to be, you know, but we'll, we'll see how it goes, I guess. I'm not 100 percent, but.
Can that be one of the first things that they adopt?
Yes.
Mr. Isaac, you have a job.
So, they, Ms. Gibson asked the question, will they be able to come over and provide onsite assistance?
There are things they do do onsite, yes.
Okay, are they background-checked and fingerprinted?
They will be.
Alongside the, you know, just to comply with the Jessica Lunsford Act. Do we have an idea of, like, what would be defined as far as the tier-one, tier-two, tier-three things?
I did not have that defined, but I can get that.
Okay.
I'd like to know that, too, because that's an unknown right there.
And what I'm saying is, those valid questions that you all have, but then, I know that this system can work, because my two previous jobs, United States Postal Service, this is what we had, then I worked at Hilltop Apartments, and this is what we had, and I'm so low in technology, that, you know, they were able, but the money is a problem, is what Mrs. Gibson is saying, and I agree with her.
Well, it's, it's, it's a.
And I'm saying, I know the program will work, it can work.
Well, I'm not saying anything about the program, I'm sure, but then again, the money is very iffy, like this thing, we might need level-two, level-three, well, you know, that means more money right there, so.
Well, from my understanding, she's, you're saying that is included, the level-two and three tiers.
Yes, the tiers are included.
Yes.
There may be an addendum that I bring to you for a short term to assist with pulling all the technology out of the outlined schools, because that has not been done.
All right, let me get that straight, then. You said, this 7,000 includes tier-one, two, and three.
So, our staff will do our tier-one, this, this is the upper level.
Right.
This is what our staff cannot do.
Okay, okay, let me, I want to get this straight now, okay. So, there's the three tiers, so in other words, this 7,000 is going to stay 7,000, no matter what tier.
For a year, yes, ma'am.
For a year, okay, for a year, okay. Even though we may require more assistance, it's still going to stay 7,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
With the exception, there may be, they, they will not come talk to me about any summer possibility of pulling this technol, this technology out of these schools, because we have all these interactive TVs, we have cameras, we have time clock, they will not talk to me till we get an agreement in place.
Okay, Dr. Pickles?
Yes, ma'am.
We do know that Mr. Isaac is leasing.
Yes.
And one of the main concerns about Mrs. Gibson is that graduation.
Yes.
So, we have time within a year, we make sure that these people are able to do what he has done with graduation, so we won't have to pay out their money. But you say about 6,800?
What was it, 68?
I haven't seen the actual quote, it was somewhere around.
But anyway, we have a year to make sure, ensure.
Yes, ma'am.
That these folk will be able to handle our graduation. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to say a few words. Well, I'm gonna say a few words about Isaac. Whenever I've needed any help, which I'm not the most technologically savvy person in the world, I was very far from it. He's been available, you know, let's, to do it. He has a lot of knowledge. It's hard to see people walk out the door that have all this knowledge walking out with them. And this is what scares me that's going on right now. We heard from one of them tonight. And we'll, we'll just, like, we're not committed after the year. I know that. We can try it, I guess, you know, to see what happens. I've got a better understanding of it now, I'd say.
And actually, it says you can terminate it on thirty days' notice, so...
Oh, this evening?
If, if you didn't walk out in the middle of the term and y'all wanted to hire somebody in town.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Five zero. All right, five point five Hickory Hill auction contract. Mr. White?
Good evening. As promised, uh, as a transition committee, when we came up with an auction company that was willing to do the auctions for the outside outlined schools, I would bring it to you for approval.
Can I ask something, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The contract is for an, uh, online auctions only, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so it, that, that's how, and, and it's for the, it says fixtures and other merchandise. So, to the extent we have, like, a TV bolted to the wall and they wanted to sell it, that's a, that's a fixture, and so you got bolted, take it. Right, okay, okay, I think I'm right. And I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
And I didn't see that it obligated us to use them to, uh, sell any of this property. I mean, it's just, we're retaining them where if we wanna sell some with them, we can.
Right, we, we would go through with them to show them, this is what we're selling, this is what, it would be all marked, yes.
Okay.
So, they will be our contractor?
Yes.
And they should follow our directions?
Yes.
Of what we want to contract with them?
And when will these auctions take place?
Ms. Gibson, if I may address that.
Okay.
So, and speaking, speaking to Mr. Buggy, we originally were gonna move everything to Greenville. He kind of discouraged that and said we should have three separate auctions. Um, that there may be individuals that want to buy something specifically from Lee or buy specifically something from Pinetta, um, for memorabilia, or they just know there's something there, so they want that. It also would not flood the market all at one time, so we could get better prices, so that somebody may want a class of chairs or a, um, conference table, chairs, whatever the case may be. So, by having the three separate auctions. So, it's, once we surplus, we go through, get what we need relocated to the central school or the high school, then we'll bring an inventory to the board to surplus. Then they can go and start to mark the items to get ready for the various auctions.
Thank you.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if I can, I think this contract specifically says Greenville Elementary School.
Yes.
So, I think what you're saying is, we, we need to have contracts for each of those sites, right?
Or amend this one.
Or amend this one, yeah.
So, initially, when we did it, we, our initial plan was to move everything to the gymnasium.
As a staging area for the, yeah.
And so, we all set. It's gonna be at each school.
I think that's a good idea.
All right, so we're gonna...
Amend?
I need the, I need a motion if we're gonna use Hickory Hill Auction and we do amend, we have the three separate locations.
Mr. Chair, I move that we use Hickory Hill Auction and that we amend the contract to include Lee and Pinetta schools. It's going to be Greenville, Lee, and Pinetta with separate auctions. Auctions.
I second.
I have a motion by Ms. Hagan and a second by Ms. Knight to use the Hickory Hill Auctions and to, uh, adjust the contract to include, uh, Lee, Pinetta, and Greenville instead of just Greenville. Any more discussion on it?
Yeah, um, I think you probably do need to add it. This contract doesn't have a term, which is probably not uncommon for auction contracts. You probably need to, you know, do a year, whatever you think is appropriate. But have an end date like, uh, July 1 of 2026, let's say, is the end date.
Well, then, I would like to amend that motion to include the ending date for July 1st, 2026.
In my second stance.
Okay. We have a amended, um, motion to include an, uh, end date of July 1st, 2026 to the Hickory Hill Auction Contract, along with it being in Greenville, Lee, and Pinetta. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor? Five zero. All right, five point six, shared services agreement.
This is the shared services agreement for our three shared positions, uh, based on our staffing plan, um, the three positions. So, Madison will be the fiscal agent for the ESE Director. Jefferson will be the fiscal agent for the transportation. And Jefferson's calling it HR. Our staffing plan calls it employee relations. So, for us, it's that person that will manage our, um, teacher certifications. So, we have to have somebody that's monitoring that to keep up the teacher certification aspect. Jefferson was looking to make sure they had things on their staffing plan. They no longer have an ESE Director on their staffing plan. So, how this will work is the individual will be in the, our county sixty percent of the time or three days a week. And in Jefferson, forty percent of the time or two days a week. And then, we will bill accordingly. And in, in the case of an emergency, then we will sit and, um, ponder and, and either have a Zoom meeting or we'll swap out a day or something. So, this is the agreement, and I do ask for your approval so that we can go ahead and advertise the ESE Director. The positions will be advertised in both counties. We will also advertise them outside.
And so, that's a combination of ESE and transportation?
ESE, transportation, and, um, HR for them, and it's employee relations for us on our staffing plan. So, I do ask for your approval.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the, um...
Shared services.
Shared services.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the shared services agreement.
I have a motion by Ms. Knight.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hagan to, uh, approve the shared services agreement. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, so, um, just going back to, so that we have clarification that you're gonna be posting these positions, since we had questions this evening from Ms. Bulmer. I do wanna clarify for her, since the posting will be there, um, you know, that we will be posting. Will this post internally first before it goes externally, or will this just be a posting for anybody and everybody?
Well, it will be both. However, I can't post, I can only post ESE as of now. I cannot post the other two until Jefferson's board approves.
But once Jefferson approves it...
Once it approves, then yes.
It will be open to the employees first for the three days, as per our, all of our other positions?
Our bargaining agreement.
At each school?
Yes, well, within the district.
Yes, I'll pick.
Yes.
Okay, and the qualifications for the Transportation Director has already been predetermined and negotiated?
Uh, so we'll use the Jefferson, since he's the fiscal agent. But it does meet all the, they have to have all the certifications, CDL, license, and everything.
So, those are some of the, some of the concerns that has been addressed by this board, I mean, by the Transportation Department.
Correct.
And they will get more information
Yes.
as they go along concerning Transportation Department.
And I will, I've already told Mr. Ansley he is welcome to apply. I, I just have to have him reapply for the position. It's not something I can appoint, so...
Okay, the ESE direct, that was a coordinator, and it's, you've made it to a director, okay. All right, what, what, human resources, okay. We have a rough time getting people to work here. And the idea of one person representing two different districts, well, that doesn't sound logical to me. It's, we're in competition right now. We're trying to get, and that, that, that right there would be, I think, a concern. But that's all I have to say about it.
Your concern is with HR?
Yes, yes, it's...
My, my, my concern with HR would be, it's got to be the right person. I, I think, I think, I think it can, any of this stuff can work if it's the right person. It's gotta be the right person, though.
Well, we're dealing with two people, though.
What you mean?
One person for here, one person for there.
I know, any of the shared positions can work if it, if the right person is hired, but we gonna have, we gonna have, we gonna have some say in who gets hired for any of it.
And I'm all for the right people, no doubt.
Well, what you're saying, um...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
What you're saying, Mr. Carroll, is we write the job description not to fit a person, but the person fits the job description.
That's right. I think if we, if, I mean...
Because sometimes we write a job description to pick a, to the person that we want. But this particular time, we write the job description and the person will fit the job description.
Was this being done as a cost, I know, I, here I go again, as a cost effective, I mean, that's why we are going this route, or?
So, cost savings for both districts, but we're also going down to the two schools. And then Jefferson County is only one school.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, when you're constantly hearing from the state and even Senator Mumford, you, you better figure out a way to cut your budgets. You better figure out how to share resources, look at different things. Even from Representative Tant, when they're talking about consolidating counties. And I don't know if Mr. Reeves has heard that, but they're talking about consolidating cities and counties. So, I mean, we're all sitting there trying to figure out, how can we think outside this box over here? So, um, Senator Mumford, I mean, it's, it's been said multiple times, you know, rural, small districts will be bankrupt in two years.
I can see that.
So, we're having to think differently, how we can pull ourselves together. We started with the consortium, seeing what they could help us with. That's the reason, it's like, how can you help us? We're paying you this money, how can you help us with things? So, that's where we're looking at our small neighboring districts, because we're all in the same boat.
Okay, any more, any more discussion?
Yes, um, I just, this is a tough one for me, because I have had conversations with the superintendent. And honestly, up until the moment that I sat and listened to our bus drivers, I was onboard for this. But I will sit here and admit to you that my mind can be changed. And I just, with us going into a consolidation, knowing all the changes we're gonna have, hearing you guys, hearing your heart, hearing how much Mr. Ansley does, and knowing that these employees, you know, it's, it's gonna be a crucial year for us as a district. I understand the cost savings. I, I do, I get it. Um, I just can't in, in good conscience right now support this.
No, I'd like to also go back to what we heard tonight. I know that Travis was a bus driver, you know, driving the bus regu, not a bus driver. He was driving the bus regularly.
As the director.
Mister, yes, and Mr. Ansley has done the same thing, okay. And we're always looking for bus drivers, you know, so in other words, yes, I heard them tonight. I already kind of figured out what I was gonna do anyway, but I mean, um, okay, I mean...
And I will say this, I'm not saying that this is not something I could support in the future, or that there aren't good things that come with this. However, I'm just trying to look at it for what we're facing right now. Looking at all of these positions and realizing that there's gonna be a, a lot for each of these people to have to deal with this coming school year, especially, um, I just, that's my, my two cents on it.
Any more discussion? Any more?
Yes, sir.
All right. What I gotta say is, shared services can work if you get the right people.
Let's take the vote.
I'm fixing the vote. All, all in favor of the shared services agreement? Ray Jackson? All opposed? All right, it's three to two when Ms., uh, Ms. Gibson and Ms., um, Thompson oppose. Okay. Five point seven, staff travel.
Um, before you this evening, there are two staff travel. Uh, one trip to, uh, for Ms. Kelly to Orlando, and then one for Ms. Fletcher to Orlando. So, I do recommend your approval.
Okay. Do I hear, have a motion on the staff travel?
I move to approve the staff travel.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Thompson and a second by Ms. Gibson to approve staff travel. Any discussion on the staff travel? Not? All in favor? Five zero, field trip request, Dr. Pickers?
Um, before you, excuse me, I'm sorry. Before you this evening, there's one field trip request for the FFA to travel to Orlando, and I do recommend your approval.
I move to approve the field trip request.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Gibson and a second by Ms. Hagan to approve the field trip request. Any discussion on the field trip? Not? All in favor? Five zero. All right, five point nine, personnel changes?
Um, if you'll look online and then also at the paper that was provided for the personnel changes. So, we have summer school food service workers. We have requests for extra hours for Ms. Pride. Uh, there is one change I would like to make for Ms. Pride. The, uh, request was only for twenty-five hours to assist with curriculum and rethinking. I think it's gonna take more than twenty-five hours, so I am upping the request to forty hours and may end up having to come back, um, just knowing the scope of work of what Ms. Davis and Ms. Pride will be doing. So, I at least would go ahead and like to ask for forty hours at the moment. Then there's extra hours request for central staff. I would like to remove the library request at this moment, at this time. Uh, then there's some extra hours request for the high school for, uh, extra planning and kind of a written data review as they're going ahead and working on summer planning. They're also needing to add Mr. Jimmy Brown and then Ms. Jada Williams. And then Mr. Self needs to be added. He will need to do safety for one week at Greenville. Why the, um, sheriff has their safety, um, camp for the children, their sheriff's youth camp. And then Ms. Mitchell for, uh, some scanning, so online, you see them.
I didn't get all of that, um, Madam Superintendent.
No, it's, it's on the...
It's on this one that she gave us?
That's on, actually, online.
And then this one is...
So, skipping to number six, there's the summer school recommendations for the dri, bus drivers and monitors. Then there's the page that we have. So, there's, um, several teachers for central, new teachers. They've been steady, um, looking at teachers, trying to figure out who is definitely coming based on letters of intent, trying to verify... based on letters of intent, trying to verify. So these are some, trying to fill in some holes, so to speak. Mr. Self will be going to a, from an AP position to a 10-month teacher position. So I'm having to wait and I can't give you his salary until we have all his instructional verified. There's some employee reassignments, two are just reappointments down there. And then there's three resignations and four admin leave with pay at this time. And then on the back, there's the summer school recommendations for Greenville. So I do recommend your approval of all our personnel changes.
Okay, uh, have a motion to approve the personnel changes?
I move to approve the personnel changes. Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Thompson, a second by Ms. Hagan to approve the personnel changes? Any discussion on the personnel changes?
I've got, this is the first time I've seen this right here. And, and I realize that you're trying to get the teachers and all that, but again, the, the public hasn't seen it. See, that, that's the thing that we've, I've spoken about this before. It's supposed to be posted, just as a, you know, to respect the public, a week before, the agenda comes out, came out last Monday, none, you know, that, that bothers me. We have a lot of people listening, a lot of people concerned with the school system, especially right now. And here, I sit down and this is right here in front of me, okay. All right, now, going back to this, okay. You said Shanika would be going, would be increased to 40 hours.
From 25 to 40.
Is she a 10-month employee or an 11-month?
She's a 10-month.
Okay, so she's.
I wondered about that anyway, I knew that was not enough hours, though. Forty hours are not gonna be enough hours. And Mrs. Yolanda, and they are doing this, and this is something new. That's not gonna be enough hours for either one of them, forty hours would not be.
Okay, to continue on, Yolanda is new in the position. So anytime you take a new position, I, I, we've done it many times. We'll keep someone on to kind of guide them along, which Shanika is not, has, has no res, no, um, what's the word for it? She doesn't know the position, you know, in other words. Wait a minute, did you call on someone?
Ms. Pride, would you like to come up and speak?
If you wanna come speak, you can come up.
Good evening. I know curricula as well, I've been in the education system for 20 years.
Well, I didn't know what your qualifications are.
I, I've been in education 20 years.
Will you please list your qualifications?
I also have a master's degree in educational technology. I graduated from FAAMU. I've taught school for 20 years, I was deemed this past school term. So, I, I've done a lot in the district, a whole lot.
Well, I'm glad that you're here and got your education, that's good, okay. But I'm still discussing what I'm discussing here.
I understand.
Okay, mhm.
But you, you talking, well, we'll talk off record, because it's a lot of things that need to be said.
Oh, okay, very good, all right, all right. Okay, so she, that position right now is a 10-month position, you said?
Her position is, yes.
Is a 10-month position, okay. All right, now, I'd like us to think about the teachers that are, the new teachers that are coming from the outline schools and any new teacher. They have to prepare their classroom, they have to get everything ready. Guess what? They're not getting any more money. They, they're gonna just, you get in there and you get your classroom ready and you be ready for the kids. No one's looking for mon, I, I say, you know what? If you're gonna be paying everyone else, these people, extra money, give everybody extra money. They work extra time. And I don't see anything down here about, well, no, the teachers, they're, they're gonna have to get their rooms ready. Are they gonna get paid extra for that? I want us to think about that. I think they deserve. Now, knowing teachers like I do, and I'm one of them, we just go in there, we do it. If it needs something, we pay it out of our own money, don't expect any recognition, or, in other words, just go ahead and do it. But I, I, this got me thinking about that. And, and you don't see them coming up here and saying, now I spent, you know, 10 hours trying to get my classroom ready, I want more money. I don't see that. I, I don't know how to go around it, I don't know if there's an answer to it, but I got thinking about this. How, how do these people get extra hours? Is this from the principal? Do they say to the principal, I need 40 hours, or I need 10 hours, or?
The ones that were requested.
Okay.
Those were requested by the principals.
By the principal, huh.
And then Ms. Pride was requested to help Ms. Davis.
Uh-huh, well, I have nothing against her being helped, but I still say, I, I don't see any, because you know, when you have to pack up a classroom, like they're, they're doing, and you know, move into a new school, that's gonna require a lot of getting it all unpacked if they can find their stuff or whatever.
Mr. White, can you speak to that for us, please? Thank you.
But before he speaks, let me say this, and I'm reading, and it says, and, um, they are, this is a new something. They're sorting the curriculum from the outline schools. And they need to sort these curriculums from the outline schools, which has not been done before, because we haven't gone in consolidation before. So this would be something new.
So, i- if I can address this real quick, this, this was a project that Ms. Hill and Ms. Kaufman were going to do over the summer. They're no longer with the district. Yolanda is in the position now. She needs help sorting through just in the outline schools, the old curriculum to the dump, the new curriculum to Central. That's all it is.
And remember, I talked about this, don't you remember, I talked about this? That these people are going to be doing it for free over the summer, and that they needed to be.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm also, I'm also saying everybody.
We have already planned on doing, it's just that the people who were gonna do it are no longer with us.
And when you did that presentation, I did spoke.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, you did.
Remember that.
I will say that back to the, the teachers packing up their classrooms, that's done every year, whether they're moving or not. Not necessarily to the extent that it was done, but that's post-planning and pre-planning for them. And we have moving services to actually move those boxes and things for them. So they will not be physically moving those items themselves.
The district's gonna provide the moving process to Central.
I just want, I don't want the public to think that we're requiring our teachers to come in over the summer and move their items, because that is not the case.
Oh, absolutely not. They're gonna do like teachers do throughout the United States, where they come in during their pre-planning and.
They set up their classroom.
They, that last week, when they worked, they were scheduled to work through Friday.
Yes.
They were packing up their classrooms and being paid through Friday.
Yes.
And so I don't want the public to think that we are, we appreciate our teachers. We're not asking them to come over the summer and move their classrooms.
Friday, most of them weren't even here, so.
Right.
Well, no, we don't expect them to work one minute past their contract. But I'm saying how they do work, which is their decision, I realize that. You know, that, that's, hey, that's, I didn't have to put in the extra time or hours. And we know they're not physically moving boxes, I mean, that's for sure. But, um, I, I just would like, it just dawned on me that how we, we're getting hours for this, hours for that, but what about those that are putting in time when not, they're not getting any extra? But, that's just me.
Well, most, most of the teachers that I know, like Mr. White said, they worked, their contract was through Friday. Their classrooms were already packed up, and they were taking time off because they were finished.
I like, but they will also have to unpack those boxes and get that together.
And that is part of their contract.
It's one thing to pack them up. Time they are allotted.
Well, they'll, they will get their pre-planning.
And I understand what Mrs. Gibson is saying, and if this should occur, we should take, pay these people if it should occur.
I agree with you, I do, but I don't want the public to think, absolutely. Absolutely.
The public realizes what teachers do, yes, they do.
Well, I would think, I would think that if they requested, go, went to the superintendent or went to their principal and said, listen, I need a couple hours this week. I would suspect that, it may take them a month to get the money, but we gonna have to meet on it. But I would, I would suspect, expect that they would be brought before us that they needed some extra hours. That's just, I mean, we give extra hours all the time for people that ask for it. And if they go up there and, and the principal asks for it, then I, I don't think, if, if it comes up before us, we gonna, we gonna, we probably gonna approve it.
If it can be tested by, we will approve it.
If, if, if it's, if it's something other that they asked for, and the principal asked for, and they needed it, you know, because you can go up there on Sunday, now, there's about the teachers up there on Sunday working. That's because they want to.
Yeah.
That's because they real. That's, that's not because, that's not because they're getting paid, that's because they got something other inside them.
It's just like last summer when they were at Central paying the walls.
They're not going to ask for money either.
Well, I mean.
Even when they, when they go to Dollar Tree or they go to wherever, they spend a tremendous amount of money out of their pockets. And I mean, I, I, I've been in the business, I've seen what happens. So I, I just wanted to put that to the board, that, you know, it's, it's, and I don't want to wait. If Mrs. Smith says, I, I deserve 10 hours, well, if we give it to one, we have to give it to, you know, in other words, oh. That's just me talking right now, probably because I see what goes out. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White, appreciate you. All right, any more discussion on the personnel change? End of where we at?
Yes, they have a motion in a second.
We got a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Just, the only discussion I have is that we, we need to be very timely with putting the information on the agenda. That's.
Ms. Gibson, as of this afternoon at 5 o'clock, I still had to add three additional items, and I had to speak to the employees before I could add that information.
Well, I can understand that, and I can understand that we're at the end of the year, ready and prepared for the next, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Five zero. All right, five, point 10, Goal Book.
Goal Book is used by the ESC staffing specialist. And they, it was first purchase, I emailed you the information. After speaking to a board member, they wanted some more information, so I emailed everybody the information. So it's used to help the staffing specialist write, um, literature-based goals and set the goals. It's, the biggest thing it actually helps with is the compliance aspect. And so the tracking of the IEP goals. So the, um, prior to Melinda resigning, she went ahead and submitted the, um, quote for a renewal for the second year for up to 17 users to be able to use this. So this will come out of the ESC budget. So I do recommend the approval. So, like I said, the biggest thing it helps with is tracking and then compliance. And that's a huge thing for IEPs.
Okay. Have a, do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Go.
Goal Book, yes, Goal Book.
I take it.
I have a motion by Ms. Thompson, a second by Ms. Knight, to approve the purchase of Goal Book. Any discussion?
I've got a little problem with this. Okay, um, these people, the, the ESC personnel, teachers, they are trained in goals. This is something that they, they work with all the time, the goals. And when you do something like this, it makes me, it's like me saying, Mrs. Gibson, you can't write lesson plans, so we're gonna give you something, so you don't have to, you know, in other words, no. We went to college, we, we are, this is something they should be able to do, and they had it for a year. So they familiarize themselves with all the goals, you can actually buy books or go online and talk, get all kinds of information about goals. So that kind of bothers me. It almost, it's almost like a disrespect for the teachers. In other words, you can't come up with goals? Yes, they can, they do it. And, and, you know, that, that's, I had someone say to me, well, why are they, that's like telling the teachers, you don't know what, you can't come up with the goals.
Do they, do they still get books to use to teach the students, so? I mean, to me, that's a slap in the face to say, we're, we're not gonna give you the tools that you need to do your job.
No, this has nothing to do with giving kids books.
I'm saying, the ESC department uses this as a tool. That doesn't mean that they're not trained, but I can't build a house without a hammer. I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to simplify it, but they need tools to do their job. And if this is a tool that they feel like they can utilize, then why, especially if it's coming out of the ESC funding, IDEA, why are we trying to handcuff our teachers and say, well, you already spend all your time doing these things. We're not gonna give you a tool that, number one, these teachers don't memorize every standard. They, I mean, we can't expect them to.
No, they're not expected to either.
No, but you also have to keep in mind, one of the very important variables in this agreement is the compliance part of it. And in order for us to make sure that we're compliant with all of our ESC goals and IEPs and everything that is required of them, you know, we, why would we not want a resource that would keep us from falling short in our compliance and being fined by the state?
Now, this was only used for the past year. So what did, what happened in prior years? I mean, what was?
Well, I mean, I'm not trying to be ugly, but we didn't always have these either.
All right, I would, I would like to have the superintendent answer that question, because she would.
I, I wanna go back to the, let's talk about how it's utilized, because if, say there's a ESC self-contained teacher, so you have that whole IEP team. So if there's a turnover, all of that information is still shared, and the next person coming in, because of that turnover, that information is saved and stored and readily available.
And they make them look smarter.
Not harder.
Didn't they do this online before, though, the, the IEPs and?
Oh, you, are you talking about through peer?
Yes.
They still have to upload it, this just allows for all the information and therefore the tracking. And it's the compliance piece is the biggest thing, to ensure that compliance aspect.
Well, it was brought to my attention, and we don't want our, any, the public to think that our teachers cannot come up with goals. And, because I know that's not true. You know, they're very well-educated on this, they should be, you know, in other words, decide which goals that they're gonna be using. Okay, well, thank you.
So again, I do recommend the purchase of the Goal Book for our ESC department.
Well, I, I remember when Ms. Ritchie talked about it last year, when, when we got it for last year, how important it was and how it was, uh, something that needed, you know, that we really needed and would help our teachers to, to be able to teach more and not be all jam up trying to write a, a Goal Book all the time.
Well, I like what Dr. Pickles just said, in case there's a change in that part.
And the turnover.
Turnover, mhm.
We have a motion in a second.
In a second, any more discussion? All in favor of a purchase of the Goal Book? Five zero. All right.
Superintendent.
Superintendent.
So the main thing that I am focused on right now is the conference, budget conference negotiations are back on. So we're watching that to see where things are falling. There are several bills that are also, um, being signed by the governor right now, so we're just waiting. I do have Mr. Copeland working on building the budget, still building it off the House budget, since that was the lowest budget. So then he just easily has to adjust some numbers once we do get a final budget. So we're hoping that we'll have a budget in the next couple weeks and that we'll be able to then quickly dump things in and move from there. So that's where the focus is right now, is with this budget. And that's all I have at the moment.
Okay. Ms. Reed?
Two quick things. The first one is, uh, you all had instructed me before that you were wanting to, uh, convey the building here to the credit union. And so what I'm gonna do, unless y'all tell me different, is I'm going to bring you a resolution at the next meeting that you all can approve that would do that. Now, and again, unless you tell me different, what it's gonna say is that you're conveying it to them for $10 and that they're, uh, you're putting a restricted covenant, it's always got to be used for the credit union. If it's not used for something else, then it would come back to us. it would come back to us, so that's how I was gonna draft it, now, if that's not what y'all wanna do, the reason I'm telling you this now is y'all can tell me if that's not what you're gonna do.
That's what I wanna do.
Okay, and, so I'll, I'll have that, and y'all can vote on it at the next meeting, and I don't know if you wanna set, when, when you want this to occur, as far as the conveyance title, if you want that at the beginning of the year, you want it immediately, you know, and, and y'all can tell me at the- Um, so, my question in that would be, is, it's my understanding that we cannot amend our insurance policy, so, like, if we were to remove it, it's not gonna save us any money or anything, so, I think that we probably need to, you know, look at that aspect of it, you know, so that way we're, 'cause we're paying for it already, there's no need to, you know, put that expenditure onto the credit union.
And it should convert, convert back to us, we already have it covered.
Yeah, so, is that January one?
Now, we can ask them to help us pay some of that insurance.
So, it's July one for the insurance, however, they are going to take all the utilities and put in their name, they do not want to be, so if we go ahead and do it, say, October or even January, though, that will save, be a little savings to us.
Okay.
So, but that's the board's prerogative.
Yeah, that would be the only aspect that I would say look into. Yeah, and I'll, I'll put a blank date in the resolution, y'all tell me next time, but, you know, that's just, that's one of the issues. The other thing is, we had talked previously about the, the process for disposing of the school sites for the outline schools, the Greenville, Pine, and Lee, and what I had recommended, 'cause we had done some of this in, in Jefferson County, was that we needed to advertise in the newspaper, on the website, a, basically a request for proposals, the reason is, when the school district disposes of real property, unlike a lot of other governmental entities, you have a little bit more flexibility than they do, you have to dispose of the property in the best interest of the public, and it doesn't really give you a lot of guidance other than that. So, what, what I had recommended is that we do an RFP, it says, look, we're accepting proposals on, for each of these school sites, they all have to be in by a certain day, because otherwise, what's gonna happen is, as soon as you think about one, somebody else will show up, and, you know, and all that, so anyway, I've already prepared that, and I've got it ready to run in the paper, I don't know that that needs to come back to the board unless y'all wanna see it, the, the RFP just says, get your proposals in by a certain time, and then once those proposals come in, of course, that comes back to the board, for you all to decide which proposal you want to accept, if any, y'all, y'all always have the ability to say, no, we'll just keep the site, so.
Should we talk about, in one meeting, did we talk about disposing all of this, leaving it until the end of this year or something?
And, and that's why I'm asking, 'cause if, if y'all want, we go ahead and run the, the advertisement, if y'all wanna wait till the fall, or whatever, I don't know, superintendent's got a recommendation?
So, we have to let the, our property and casualty insurance know by the, by December, before January one, that we are removing these properties off, so we do have to have that, and let them know.
So, it's paid for, so you would not have to be in a hurry, excuse me.
Well, we don't have to be in a hurry, but we also have to take in mind that disposing of a building of that caliber is not gonna happen overnight, and to find somebody who's gonna want a building of that, you know, magnitude is not gonna happen overnight, so I do think that the RFP would be in our best interest to go ahead and get out there, I just wouldn't put, like, a closing date for thirty days, I might leave it open for a little bit.
Okay.
Well, and the, and what it says is very basic, 'cause you don't really know what people are gonna propose, it just says, by this day, you've got to have your proposal in to us, now, I would anticipate some proposals are gonna be, we'll pay cash for the property under these terms, and some proposals are gonna be, we've got this great idea for a something, kinda community center, da-da-da, please give us the property, and y'all need to just, y'all need to look at all of them, evaluate them, so. I think, I think ultimately, in whatever comes back to us, the goal needs to be that the transaction needs to be closed by December thirty-first, so that we are not paying for insurance on these buildings for an additional year, so, that's, that's what I think ultimately the goal needs to be.
So, we want closes within thirty days.
Yeah. Let me just say, before December thirty-one, and then, because the, one of the things with these projects, I mean, with these properties, they're big, there may be financing involved, maybe get banks involved, all that kinda stuff, but yes, I'll put, I'll add that, I had not added that to the RFP. Yeah, I would just make sure that they have the ability to close by, by the end of the year, so that we're not on the hook for another year of insurance, you know. And, and y'all want us to go ahead and run that in the paper? I would be on board for that.
Did, did you say, did you say that they, their proposal, we don't have to accept their proposal, and any-
You, you don't have to accept any proposal for any particular school, or any school at all.
Is there any minimum put on this, or no, you're just gonna throw it out there?
I, I have it, and the reason is, it's not a, like, a bid process for dollar figures, 'cause I promise you, you're gonna get people coming in saying, hey, we've got this great idea for a blankety-blank, and we wanna prove to you that it's good, and all of that, and then that's what you all have to decide, but yes, I'll go ahead and advertise it if that's, unless somebody's telling me different.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all I had, Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that, yes, ma'am. All right, Ms. Gibson?
Yes, I'd like, they're not here right now, but I'd like to thank the students that came tonight and did the blessing, we were, I was very proud of them, I'd like to thank the Transportation Department, Ms. Jennifer, Ms. Roxanne, Ms. Massmus and Michelle, Mr. Ansley, Ms. Laura, Tyrone, thank you for coming tonight, and I wish you'd make a habit of it, as a matter of fact, to come, you're welcome to come anytime. Ms. Miner, I appreciate her thoughts, Mr. Ryan, I think you're still back there, thank you, Mr. Ted Roush, thank you for the information, and Officer Andrews, we appreciate his information too, thank you.
As always, I would like to thank everybody who's included with this, community-wise, all over Madison County, I'd just like to thank everybody who's involved with this process and with this board, thank you.
And I concur, I appreciate you all coming and speaking from your hearts this evening, you know, decisions like these are never easy, and one of the things that I have reminded the superintendent in, in a lot of this process is, you can't teach people skills, you can teach somebody how to use software and how to use a program, but you can't teach somebody how to people, and so, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, we have currently in our director, and I hope that we will have in our director moving forward, and I highly encourage Tyrone to apply for that position, you know, moving forward, and I just want you all to know that you are valued and you are heard, and we appreciate you all being here today, and I just wanna thank everybody who's gonna continue to work over the summer, to help this consolidation be a smooth transition for our school district, and I, for those of you that are able, you know, to have a break, I hope you enjoy, you know, what you can this summer, and I look forward to a wonderful school year next year.
I would also like to say thank you to Ms. Laura, Ms. Gloria, Ms. Jennifer, Ms. Roxanne, Mr. Tyrone, and Ms. Michelle for coming tonight and for speaking, I appreciate you, as the granddaughter of a retired bus driver, I've never driven a bus, but I have heard a lot of stories, and I appreciate everything you do, thank you for coming and speaking out, it means a lot, and for everybody else that came, Mr. Ted, all of our employees, thank you for coming, thank you for speaking, thank you for being involved in this process.
Well, I'd like to thank all y'all, everybody for coming, but as far as, with your bus drivers, my mama drove a bus, my daddy drove a bus, I drove a bus, my uncle drove a bus, and, and you all, you all, and, and I tell, I, I tell everybody this, bus drivers don't know where to come close to getting paid what they, what they deserve to get.
That is the story just now.
But, and if, if, if there was any way I could pay them more, I would, but it, it's, the job that you all have is, is, you make one mistake and your life is over, and you got all them precious cargoes behind you, and, and look in the mirror one time and, and mess up, and if it don't kill you, then your life's over anyway, so, it's, it's a valuable job, and I understand all the things, the if-ands and all that, but, and I hope Tyrone will apply for that position, 'cause, you know, I, I, he, he has, he has the right temperament, I think, and so, it's gonna be open for him to do that, so I hope he does, and we will have, we will have, we will have say in who gets them shared position, and they're not, just 'cause it's being hired from Jefferson don't mean we don't have some say in there, we do, so, not we, but the superintendent does, so, anyway, I, I appreciate y'all, Ryan, I appreciate you, you, you heard him, didn't you? All right, get a newspaper, I don't know when it appears, just go up to the dollar store, you don't even have to buy one, go to the dollar store, it'll be on the front page. Anyway, appreciate y'all, everybody, Mr. White, appreciate what you do, I appreciate what you've done, and what you have done to help me, you know, when I call you, 'cause I don't, listen, I don't even know how to turn on a computer, I had to call him and ask him, so, I'm not very technical, you know, so, but, appreciate y'all, and-
Ms. Gibson would like to add something.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you again to Isaac, this'll be your last meeting, I think, isn't it? Oh, okay.
Congratulations.
We won't say goodbye, then.
Congratulations on your job, your new job.
Appreciate ya.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all for it.